All right, so now we go to some safeguards and.
You read that, Tom?
You can read that, but you've seen it before. Basically, it's what was established when we started bringing back people, I want to say it was in April. But we've added a few things, but it's very similar. We're reminding people, this, these are the conditions we want our buildings to be in. These are things, wearing masks, yeah, wearing masks you need to have, and so on and so forth. This is out there, by the way, we'll have all this on our website.
Excuse me?
But it's key to know, we have gone through this, we continue to modify this as we're having to adjust based on the Health Department, both county and state.
Are we following our mask mandate or the state mask?
We are following our mandate, we are saying all students and staff will wear masks.
Okay.
And we're, I, I think that's also what our county Health Department is highly recommending, but no one's going to come out and say, "You will." We are saying, "You will, we have the face masks, we're going to utilize them, we have the shields for the teachers, we're going to utilize them as the teachers want to." But mask is the essential piece of, essential PPE.
Is that, even though the governor has recommended that kids in second grade and below do not need to wear masks because they're not susceptible?
Not as susceptible. And we have said for standards, for across the board, K through, and someone's going to correct me, pre-K? Pre-K through 12, we're saying, "Mask up." Now, there are differences, you're right, between a kindergartner and even a fifth grader. And we have to be aware of, there are times when these kids have to do this. And we'll do that based on the parameters of safe distancing and using outdoor teaching, outdoor times for recess and those things. But again, for practice for all, face up, face mask or mask up, as the term the governor's been using, mask up, and we'll continue that throughout, and there are different sizes for our little ones. Our little ones are using child, children's sizes, they're not adult sizes, so, and we'll see how that goes. And it's going to be a learning for all of us. Okay, learning environment, so Tracy, why don't you come up and?
One other question, just, all of our drinking fountains are going to be turned off, correct?
Yes, yes, so all drinking fountains are turned off, but we do have water dispensers for bottles, and those will be students bringing in their own water bottles to fill. But that's especially important, you're going to see that in another part of the presentation.
Okay, okay.
What about masks for teachers, I, you mentioned something?
Teachers will be given shields, but they'll provide their own masks. So if they want to, by the way, students can personalize their mask, they can wear masks from home as well, if they so choose. It will follow the dress code, just like anything else, but they're allowed to do that as well. So teachers, bring your own mask, because we probably will see these being something like what we're wearing, so they can reuse them. If they don't have it for the day, though, we have, again, disposable masks that we're handing students on buses as they come, if they don't have them, but in the buildings as well, they'll have access to those.
So supplier on mask, and every teacher gets a face shield?
The shields, is it?
I'm going to talk about it.
She'll talk about the shields.
Okay, thank you.
On the safety for our teachers, are we talking at all about the prophylactic use of hydroxychloroquine, which is supposed to be a very great preventative for catching, because some of our teachers are vulnerable.
Yeah.
And that in conjunction with zinc has been very effective for doctors and other professionals on the front lines.
I don't think we're responsible for giving drugs to any of our teachers for any reason whatsoever.
Right, so again, that would be through the Health Department, what they had recommended, and they'd have to go through a personal physician. However, I know that our, Mary Hess, our Nurse Director, Director of Nursing, she is right there with the Health Department, and again, we can't tell them, or we can at least give them information as far as what's happening. And again, that would be through our local county Health Department.
Okay.
So where they're, where they are that day. Okay, Tracy, learning environment, and this is important only because we want to have some common vocabulary and definitions, as far as what is traditional learning, so on and so forth. So I would like for her to do that, and she's going to speak to those items. We do have also some, as we look at elementary and secondary, what does that mean? Do we have sample lesson plans? And if you want to take it from there, thank you.
So, good evening, I wanted to share with you this evening the three learning environments that we as a district have landed on. And these are academic, but I also want to stress how important the social-emotional learning is, and Fay and her team have been working diligently to collaboratively with the academic to make sure we address both the social and those, social and emotional learning environment as well as the academic environment. But right now, I must specifically talk about our three different learning environments, being our traditional learning environment where we will, this year, use more digital resources as well as hands-on textbooks and things in the classroom. And that will be in our traditional school environment. Then we have our blended learning, which will provide, again, use of digital and hands-on, because our students will come to school and have face-to-face instruction as well as being provided off-site instruction. And then our third, remote learning strategy will employ digital content to provide off-site instruction to students who, and families who make that choice. So our face-to-face, again, is the same as it's normally been, kids will follow their traditional schedule. They, again, we're going to ensure by using our digital resources, whether access to textbooks that kids practice at school, how to access those things, the LMS. So when we have, say, a snow day, or a student is sick at home, they can take, have their device, and they can access the learning from home. Our remote learning provides, again, for off-site instruction. One of the things that the state has identified is that for K through five, six, actually, no, five, grade five, students need to be engaged in learning for five hours. And for grades six through 12, they need to be engaged in teacher-directed learning for six hours. And so they will access and use our LMS system daily. We've had discussions about students having to log into each course by period. They will participate in asynchronous and synchronous lessons and learning activities, and they will have access to digital resources and assessment. Because we're working with NWEA now to assess our students remotely, they have that option.
So, back to that slide.
Yes, ma'am.
So the five to six hours, does that mean they're going to, what they do at home is going to be five to six hours a day?
They, so the state is saying guided, engaged and guided, instruction guided by a teacher. So that doesn't mean they have to be on the computer for five or six hours. It means that they need to be working academically. So say they're doing a research project, especially for our upper, our high school secondary students, they could be engaged in a science, a research project or a science experiment, and maybe they need to upload something to the LMS to prove, to show that their teachers what they've engaged in. So there's some kind of activities that they're going to be engaged in. They could be doing independent reading, independent writing, doing math. So they can be engaged in a variety of learning experiences, not just watching a video of a teacher teaching a lesson.
So it's five to six hours over their time, but it's not five to six hours sitting at the computer?
Correct. And there, so the other question becomes, so what does that look like for a student and teachers at school? Because one of the challenges we're working through is, what does that look like for a teacher? You know, we want to make sure that students have the ability to access their teachers if they've chosen the remote learning option. So we're working through some of the logistics in the buildings and get, and her team will be working with them to make sure teachers have a schedule where students can connect with them on a regular basis.
Tracy, what is the asynchronous versus a synchronous lesson? Are these kids going to be required to log into a class along with a bunch of other kids at the same time? Or will they be a recording of some sort that they just log in and access when they're ready?
Both of those, so you, so you could.
Good question, though, it's a very good question.
Awesome question. So they will be able to, teachers for students who participate in the remote learning, they can log in and their, at a certain time, and their teacher present a lesson live to them. That is, that is one of the options. The other option is, sometimes the teacher will record something and have it posted, or post a video of something and have them watch it and then respond to it.
So, so if I am at home, do I have to have the nine to four or eight to three shift? Or can I do, can I work from two to 7:00 PM?
Are you, if you're a student?
Yes.
Um, that's a part of the work that we're doing collaboratively with the Office of School Leadership, because buildings, sometimes a teacher may be teaching one group of kids and may need to have another period where they're doing remote teaching. So I may teach, say, three periods a day, and may, with kids in front of me, and then I may have to do some remote learning. Those are some of the, I want to call it details, that we're in the process of working out. And we do have currently, in one of the next couple of slides, we have model schedules that we can provide for buildings, and we also have model lessons that we can provide for teachers to help support them.
So help, just to add, teachers have a contract time, therefore you need to honor that contract time. So I think there's something about having a framework, it's something about having structure. So therefore, if you are a remote student, and say you're a high school student, 9:30, do we start at 9:05 or some, 9:05-ish, whenever the day starts, that's period one. And you need to have your availability, you need to be plugged into that course. Then you can imagine you have, in a high school setting, you have another teacher, that's second period. So they are following the periods of the day. Now, you and I know, there are a lot of ways to do things, and they could maybe even, I'll just say, they will have remote access, hopefully, to lessons. But if you want access to that teacher directly, you need to be during those time slots. And that's the flexibility of being able to have at-home instruction, but we do need to have it in a structured way. So that's where we're leaning, talking with our teachers, I think they're leaning that way as well. But you also heard the word, "recorded lessons." So we are wanting to record lessons, we think that's best. Not when they're doing synchronous lessons to record them. I.e., I'm a remote, I'm a remote teacher, I may be doing, I'm teaching strictly remote, but I'm not teaching to those students in front of me as well. We want those two separated, so therefore, prerecord. And I'll just use algebra as an example, I have an algebra department. Today, I'm going to record Lesson 1, actually, I'm going to record it prior to the first day of school, because on Day 1, we need that going to the Group 1 students and Group 2 students. Now, they're going to hear it via recording and work on it, they can ask questions, hopefully, we're going to work this through, through some type of Zoom or what have you, where they can contact their teacher for that period. But again, it's that sequencing event, prerecorded, we're actually creating, if you will, a virtual app. So excited about this, excited about working with the teachers on this, and developing a system that's going to generate these lessons, and at the same time, make it doable for our teachers, make it doable for our teachers. So, all right, any questions on that piece?
So, other than maybe a teacher doing a Zoom with kids or some sort of, you know, with a class, we're not going to be live streaming classrooms?
We're not going to be live streaming classrooms. Remote teachers could be, for instance, hey, I, I have this, again, here's a video on this, if they want to, they potentially could. You have to be careful, though, because as you Zoom, many things, we're talking about all the, what are our ethics of Zooming, what are our protocols of Zooming, appropriate protocols? That's probably the first couple of days of school, by the way. How do you remote? What are the guidelines? David's probably thinking, "Oh my goodness, I'm going to have to write another handbook on just what are the ethics of Zooming." But again, these are all new areas for us, but we, we know, this is, this is how we're going to have to deliver instruction. So we also, though, are aware of, how much risk do we present to FWCS? How much risk do we present to the other students? We have to be aware of that as well. So that's why we're having to be, I will say, and you'll hear me say this, we're having to be pretty tight on that, we can't be too loose on the protocol piece. Just because we have to start tight, and then we'll see if we can loosen up. Go ahead, sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the third method, our learning environment, is our blended, which is a combination of face-to-face instruction and off-site remote learning. Again, when students are not at school, they do need to still be engaged, and it becomes essential that they log into the LMS, because that's how we count instructional days. So I know some young people, my, my son included, thought that on certain days he didn't have to log in, and I said, "Yes, you have to log in," because they don't know if you're doing your activities and your work. And again, we're going to utilize asynchronous and synchronous learning and activities. And then, again, our blended learning kids will also access the, and utilize the management system, digital resources, and they'll have the, the option of doing hands-on, because they'll have time in school, so they can do some, some lab work and whatnot. Next slide, please. So we do have choices for, we have a draft schedule for what remote learning will look like, and we provided guidance, we will provide guidance for teachers on what that time can be, look like. And so our curriculum department and technology departments are working to design that professional learning right now. Next. Same with this secondary choice, we have a draft schedule for blended learning as well as a draft schedule for remote learning, as well as model lesson plans, because we know this is a significant shift for our teachers. So they'll have access to these examples as well, when we can provide our professional learning in August. Next. The next area is our special populations, specifically our English language learners. In this case, we do have to screen our students to identify students who may be eligible for language development services. And so we'll follow their IOPs, and then our ELL teachers will work collaboratively with the regular content area teachers to ensure that our students have the language acquisition instruction necessary to be successful in the blended learning model or the remote learning model. Next. The other area is our students with disabilities. Case conferences will need to be scheduled, and they can be done via phone, similar to what we did back in the spring. But we need to make sure that we determine supports and related services that may need to result, as a result of the, a blended model or remote model of learning that parents may choose. I will say, I'll reiterate, the traditional learning is recommended for our students identified with a severe or moderate disability. So teachers, I mean, teachers, parents who have questions or concerns, they will be able to reach out to their teacher of record who can provide them with some guidance. And then our special ed teachers will work, will work collaboratively with our gen ed teachers to make sure that students get the support when appropriate for traditional content areas. So that's all of what I have right now. I know there's a lot of questions regarding special populations, and Krista, as they work to have the FAQ out, we're responding to a lot of the questions that parents are having. Any questions?
Yeah, so how will this fall as far as the remote learning goes? How will it be different from what went on last spring?
Good question. One is the expectation. So first and foremost, all of our students this time will have access to a device and have connectivity. So that was one of the barriers we had last spring, was that we did not distribute as a district devices to ensure that our students can access. The other piece is that we, all of our teachers, regardless of special ed, ELL, general education teachers, will all have LMS pages. Students will be able to access content by, via the LMS. And so they can, they can turn in assignments, whatever's, that's a lot different than what we had last spring. Last spring, it was, everyone didn't have a device, and that was our biggest obstacle.
Also, attendance and grades are now happening.
Yes.
So there's your, if you will, the counting badly piece there as well. And if we see attendance that is waning, it follows the attendance policies that we currently have. So whether you're remote or in person, we expect attendance. So that's a, that's a huge difference, as well as it is now content moving forward. You're going to be mastering new standards. So it's very much school like we've had in the past, it's just delivered in a different way. So there's the huge difference. Now that, now that we have the equipment and the tools available, and you're going to hear from Ramona next, and also the teacher training component. So before we go to Ramona, though, I just, I think it's, yeah. Notice, we're recommending that students with severe or moderate disabilities attend daily. That's because those students are in smaller class sizes where we can do distancing. So we think that's important. We know it's very difficult to provide those services remotely, so we can do that. I, I will say always, a parent has a choice, but it's something that has to go through the IEP process, because that is a, truly a contract for the student. And that can't be modified unless we've gone through that process of IEP. So with that said, how we distribute these, all of our computer devices and so on, that is, Jack has a plan here, and I'll say that he's been unbelievable in his coming up with recommendations. I would like to see us move something on this timeline, but we're open to suggestions. You can see here, and you can ask Jack questions. We start the distribution the first day students arrive, so that's what we're thinking. We have discussed, how can you do it earlier than that? And we'll continue that discussion. But we are prioritizing with students who are remote, they need to have those devices ASAP. So, you know, we're going to do our best to get those to every one of our kids by the 18th. If we try to use some other systems, other methods, we're open to that. So if there are people out there listening to us right now that have some other suggestions, we're willing to think about that. But some of the parameters that Jack, that you were working around were, we have limited staffing, that's a huge piece. And we're trying to distribute 30,000 devices, we have to record each device being distributed to each student. So that's a lot of hands-on. And we're thinking it would be best within each building. So Jack, I think you have centered it on each building distribution versus one and all come to a drive-through and try to do it that way. Now, we have thought about drive-throughs at each building, and perhaps we can work through that. But that is a limitation we have, and we understand that, and we're working to do it. But I did want to share that with, with everyone, we're trying to overcome this obstacle.
So, every kid has a device, but am I going to have that device with me at school? Especially in secondary, take it from room to room? Or do they have classroom devices built, or what?
So this is now, they'll have with them. So elementary is already within the same room, so that's, now you're talking really secondary world. So 6 through 12, they'll be carrying their devices. They have bags for those devices, specially designed to handle the, should we say, the concussion of students dropping and so forth. They're specially designed for that, and, but they will take them from room to room. Now, part of the safety phenomenon will be, how do we keep cohorts together? That's a, going to be interesting, you'll see if some of our middle school principals can create that. So maybe the teachers move and not the students, that sort of thing. But we won't know about that until they sit down with their QIT groups and work through some of these. I don't see how that's going to happen in the high school, though. They'll, they will most likely carry that with them. Again, much of the curriculum is now delivered digitally, so if we have digital textbooks, they're being, they're to be used. And we know there are some textbooks or consumable items that, that's hard copy. They're going to carry those books, and they'll have those as well. But primarily, we're trying to stick with digital formats.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so now we're to Ramona. Ramona Coleman is going to talk about professional learning and what's been happening in that space the last several weeks.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity again, thank you to Dr. Daniel and Cabinet for giving me this opportunity to share where we've been on our journey with deep learning. I did not include a slide tonight, I basically want to say that I'm the one that's facilitating this message. But we do have a deep learning, I've shared that with the board before, a deep learning communications team that's made up of directors at the secondary and elementary level from the Office of School Leadership, the Director of Special Education, Director of Curriculum, managers from FACE, especially in the area of counseling, in the area of our.
Social movement?
Alternative programming, I was trying to think of Liz, alternative programming. And then again, of course, for me and my department, along with the coordinators for professional learning. So our work started really July 6th and 7th for this year, framing the stage again for deep learning for the 2021 school year. We had a stopgap when we left in March, moving forward with deep learning and the professional learning that we had planned for the remainder of the school year. So in order to ensure we knew as far as moving forward, how we would plan and facilitate deep learning for the school year, we actually developed a deep learning self-assessment tool to use with teachers. Teachers took that self-assessment tool around clarity, depth, and sustainability. We had, the teachers surveyed, about 80% of those teachers identified clarity as the phase of implementation that we were. So what did that truly mean to us as a district? Is that we had clarity around teachers throughout the district, understanding and having a common language in regards to the six Cs and the four elements of deep learning. But we wanted to ensure what capacity tools were we developing and what capacity tools we were providing with teachers throughout the district in order to ensure that we were moving from the clarity stage to the depth stage. So the first learning community that we brought together was our learning community of coaches, and that learning community took place on July 6th and 7th with the support of New Pedagogy for Deep Learning, NPDL, and their capacity building, Global Capacity Builders. And so with that, Janet, next slide, please. So with the facilitation with coaches, we wanted to make sure, again, that we went back to give them a look through the lens of deep learning, the clarity of learning goals around the six Cs, how we would infuse the precision of pedagogy with the four elements, and definitely involving or engaging in that collaborative inquiry circle around the school conditions that's necessary for deep learning, the district conditions that's necessary, and the system conditions. When we think about system conditions in FWCS, it really comes back to that equity hypothesis. So we know that deep learning is great for all students. However, when I think about the information that's been shared tonight, even with the information that Tracy just finished sharing, we know that deep learn is especially, it is especially informing for students that we look at that have gaps. that we look at that have gaps in their learning. So when we look at the plan that we had in place last year with the remote learning that we had for students, we know that this plan moving forward and the expectations will ensure that we have that equity hypothesis of making sure that all students are learning at all times. And that again, with our curriculum, that we're infusing the elements of deep learning with our six Cs and the four elements. With the professional learning that we provided with coaches, it was key because we know that our coaches are key communicators for us and shaping the learning in their building environment and especially in collaboration with their principals. So the new pedagogies for deep learning modeled with coaches, gave them protocols and tools that they would collaborate with their principals in getting ready for the onset of school and then bringing together their quality improvement teams that Dr. Daniel spoke of earlier that will take place tomorrow and Wednesday in their buildings. Next slide please.
So you did this three days in early July?
We did July 6th and 7th just with coaches.
Okay.
And then basically what we wanted was, is that we wanted to make sure that we're building capacity with coaches in the building. So everything that we're doing tomorrow and Wednesday with our quality improvement teams, we really set the stage and frame that learning with our coaches first.
So for those two, those two days, the sixth and the seventh, were you able to get any feedback evaluation from, from those coaches there?
Yes. So the feedback that we.
What'd they tell you?
The feedback that we have for coaches is that this really gave them the frame and the stage for moving forward for the 2021 school year. The first question that we always get from coaches is do our principals know about this? Have you talked to our principals about this? Have our principals totally bought into this? So you're asking us to do something that we want to make sure that principals have been given a roadmap. And so basically we had to ensure coaches that the information that we were sharing with them would be the same exact information that we would be sharing with principals and with their quality improvement teams on the 28th and 29th for them to take that key message back to the building.
That's tomorrow and Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, tomorrow and Wednesday, that's MPDL, the global capacity builders. They will be facilitating the learning with coaches and QIT teams tomorrow. So again, we look back, I just wanted to share again, every time I look at this slide, I know left to right, but I kind of seem to start right to left with it to see first who's involved. And so again, definitely board and cabinet, we know that we've made sure with the MPDL team that we've had Dr. Fulan and the New Pedagogies for Deep Learning to meet with the board. The DL core team is the team that I spoke of earlier that really ensures as we're planning with New Pedagogies for Deep Learning, that we have a map for how we want deep learning to be implemented throughout the district. That involves our school leaders, our coaches and QIT. This past Friday, we had Leadership for All, which all administrators throughout the district. With the readiness to learn component, again, we had Dr. Jean Clinton, who the board and the community have heard before to make sure that connectedness piece, that before we push directly into knowing that we, I'm sorry, that we know that the standards and that content is really important to our teachers and to our students and our parents in the community. However, Jean Clinton really focused on that readiness piece of making sure that we're building a culture and making sure that first before we approach the academic side of the pyramid, that we made sure that we were looking at the readiness and that social emotional learning component to make sure that all staff felt safe, that you were building that culture, that everyone felt like their voice was being heard and the wellbeing was being taken care of with everyone. Curriculum collaborators, we did not meet this past summer, but again, we know that deep learning is infused. And again, just making sure that the community knows that deep learning is definitely a foundation or frame that our superintendent, Dr. Daniel and Cabinet really sees and the board sees as an entity that helps us to reach all students in Fort Wayne Community Schools. With QIT, with coaches, continuing with principal, we will continue to design and assess deep learning. That was one of the things again, board and cabinet had asked for. How are we monitoring or assessing the impact of deep learning in FWCS? And that was really the purpose and the primary purpose of us creating the deep learning self-assessment tool so that we could see exactly where we were as a staff and that we could really personalize and be really precise about the deep learning and the support that we were providing to buildings. With the support of the New Pedagogies for Deep Learning, we're going to take each one of those phases that I shared with you earlier. When we look at the clarity, the depth and sustainability stage, we will create modules in collaboration with MPDL to say if we have building A that still needs more work around clarity, we will have modules that they can use that's just around the clarity phase of deep learning. Building B may feel like I have a group of teachers that still with clarity, but we're kind of ready to move into that depth stage of deep learning and there'll be modules available for them also. So again, always practicing in that collaborative inquiry stance, leading the culture of deep learning. So we're going to talk more about teachers, those teachers as activators, teachers as collaborators, and teachers building that culture of learning. The principal learning team protocol goes along with our deep learning visit. This past Friday, when we did our virtual webinar with all of leadership, one of the questions was how would we do that? How do you plan for us to do a learning walk if it's virtual or if we would go into a total remote stance? So again, that's part of the focus of us, of us modeling for leadership and for others, how that would look in a virtual world. And so again, in regards to Jack and the technology team and being more specific about the professional learning around how we're using Zoom or how we're using other digital platforms and how we can use those digital platforms and still have those learning visits to occur. So Tracy, on several slides, talked about asynchronous and synchronous learning. So again, New Pedagogies for Deep Learning shared with us a white paper that they had completed in coordination with Microsoft. And so with that, I wanted to make sure that these are definitions or research-based definitions that when we look at asynchronous and synchronous learning, we want to make sure that in our stance, we model the same thing for adults. So we know that in asynchronous learning, students are working independently and we're facilitating professional learning. We want to make sure that we're modeling for adults, how to engage in asynchronous and synchronous learning. Tomorrow during QIT, the synchronous learning, of course, would be the audio visual during the Zoom that New Pedagogies for Deep Learning will be in that virtual space. With the asynchronous learning, New Pedagogies for Deep Learning, Global Capacity Builders will step away and they will give QIT team members along with their principal and with the role of leadership, they will work independently in the building based upon the PL, the strategies, the information, the tools that has been facilitated synchronously with New Pedagogies for Deep Learning. So we want to make sure not just for students, but we're modeling for adults, how that would look in a virtual environment when they're working with their students. Also, we're trying to model for principals as they work continuously throughout the year and other district administrators, how that would look for them when they're not bringing administrators or adults together face to face, how that synchronous and asynchronous learning would be, how they would engage and develop that. So again, I talked about coaches earlier and we know that for our coaches, our building coaches and district coaches play a vital role in the work that we wanted to be done throughout the district. So again, with our Capacity Building Institute, July 6th and 7th, we made sure that we went back to review really the, clarifying the purpose of the work with coaches together. We wanted to make sure the norms that we talked about previously, how do we set norms, just like we set norms for any professional learning, face to face, that we want to make sure what norms are we adhering to when we're looking at norms in a virtual world? The organizing of the learning sessions. And then this was really key, the blue with the check mark because the Capacity Building Institute truly was around understanding and facilitating protocols for QIT. The ending product would be how do we move forward and making sure when we look strategic, what does our work look like for us when we're facilitating and working collaboratively with curriculum, with technology, with professional learning, with readiness to learn and making sure that we have in front of students, that's going to make them successful in the education that we're providing for them.
How many coaches do we have?
We have a coach at every single building. And so basically looking at, I want to say 53 buildings, we have 53 coaches.
Do they, do they take on an added level of importance in becoming part of a communication team for us? Perhaps something that we had not identified as part of their job description. Because you know, we're, we're all learning as we go and things are changing on the fly. And I'm just trying to figure out how we effectively communicate, whether it's, and maybe you don't need coaches. Maybe it's the principal's role, but I got to imagine that as many hands as we can, can have that are informed voices in those buildings may be very, very helpful. I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm looking at the things they do. But I'm wondering if that might be something that we add to that job description.
I think for the most part, it's there within the job description. So coaches is not a standalone or an isolated position. And so the coach's role is definitely there to support the principal. I think we go back and we even, we look at the research of showers and showers, we know that when we have teachers and you're just demonstrating the lesson, that that research shows that coaches are very impactful when they're communicating and working with their principal, the impact that they have on the learning community. So they are key communicators. And again, that's why it was important Steve, when the coaches asked, Ramona, do our principals know about this? How much of this has been shared with principals?
Yeah.
And so sometimes it's, we've kind of gone, it's like the chicken before the egg or the egg before the chicken, that you're giving me information that you have not shared with principals yet.
Yeah. And I, and I see that number eight button. And maybe it's the fact that it, it's built, it's already hardwired into their job description, but the significance or importance of that responsibility maybe becomes heightened under, under the current conditions.
Well, even like what you're, you're, we are doing things on the fly and, but trying to gather as much information as possible. So if we're going to, if we're going to model remote learning,
Yeah.
we no longer have to gather everyone in one place. So as we did with the PTA group a week ago last Wednesday, whenever that was, how do we spread that into our buildings and have that happen regularly or at least quarterly? But how do you also gather information from all these coaches on a regular basis with input from their principals? Again, we need to be, what we're, what we're trying to figure out here is what is timely? And how soon do we need that information to make adjustments? So we're really looking at COVID update, if you will, on a weekly basis. So how do we get that critical information to us? So as we start sorting from a district level, how's that coming from our building levels? So you know, I, I will call these things COVID silver linings because it has pushed us to be, I think, more efficient and more purposeful in how do we gain that input? And then use it to modify whatever, like Glenn was, how do you, what are you going to do with this? What are you going to, are you going to modify, dah dah dah? And again, I think we have to modify because this is truly unknown.
But coaches do not teach, right? They just support the teacher.
Coaches support the adult learners in the building.
But they were former teachers, correct?
Yes.
And when, and if we have classes where we're short subs, are they ever pulled in to help? Cause they are experienced and they're sort of the experts training all the others.
So we like for the answer to be no, but we definitely know that with a shortage of subs.
So they're not exempt from.
Last call.
They're, they're not exempt.
Right.
They're not exempt from that.
Okay.
So again, if we can, that, this also, if we're developing these banks of lessons, we now have access where, or let's also understand, we're going to have teachers, administrators, who because of contact tracing, will probably not be local. But they can still work remote. But you can't have a class without some type of supervision. So maybe now we're tapping into TAs. That can also be that person in the classroom while the teacher is teaching remotely. So we just flipped it, we just flipped it. Instead of the kids being remote, the teachers remote. But again, that's the kind of creativity we're going to have to think about. Because I am very concerned about substitutes. Substitutes in the teaching ranks, substitutes on our bus drivers. We need, if that's a call for our general public, that's a critical piece and we need bus drivers. We need food service workers because we are going to need substitutes. So just to call out to the public on that one. But please continue. That's good stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
So again, with coaches in that virtual world, we again know that just as Dr. Daniel just shared, that they need support also. So in order for them to support the adults in the building, we will continue to have coaches engaged and a professional learning community. We will have that engagement through our talent management system and again, leveraging with our digital platform with Zoom. So again, when we look at a new role for teachers, I was sharing with the coordinators the other day. I was looking at a Twitter account from a superintendent, I do not remember the exact district. The superintendent was asking, someone asked the question of how do we support teachers new this year? How do we support administrators new to the district? And the superintendent's response was, everyone in my district is new this year. Every administrator is new, every teacher is new, every support staff person is new. Because I'm dealing with something as an admin, as an administrator. I'm dealing with someone as the direction setter in my district that we have not had to deal with this new normal or the pandemic. So for each one of us, this slide says a new role for teachers, but this slide really speaks to each and every one of us, that how in our roles do we act as activators of learning? So we know that we're going to have to make sure that we have challenging learning goals and how do we make sure that we're having adult learners as well as student learners engaged? How do we make sure that we're giving them the access that they need to pedagogical practices? And then of course, that ongoing feedback. So exactly that, as Mr. Corona asked, how do we make sure that we're engaging in that cycle of continuous improvement and that we're really seeking the feedback that we need to make sure that we're making the adjustments that's necessary along the way? Culture building is in the middle because that is so important. We have to make sure that we have those norms of trust, that we're actually making sure that we're implementing within the learning community. Student's voice is so important, especially in deep learning, because we want them to be co-designers in the work. And then how do we cultivate that learning environment? Collaboration, when it comes back to our coaches being key communicators, our building principals, we look at our PPLCs. We look at our leadership communities throughout the district. We want to make sure what is it that we're looking at and how we're assessing, how we're connecting to students, families and the community? How we're always engaged in that collaborative inquiry piece? And definitely going back to that last bullet, it focuses on that clarity around deep learning. How do we make sure that we're building and sharing knowledge of deep learning throughout the district so that we can move to the depth phase and eventually make sure that we have what we need to make sure that we're sustaining deep learning throughout the district? This is a quote that I like. It's one that Jack Byrd uses all the time when it comes to deep learning. And so we know that what's good at learning is good at life. And we know that using deep learning, the strategies of deep learning will help not only our students to be successful, but it will help our adults to be successful. Any additional questions?
So we make a promise to the, to the state that we will have operated 180-day school year. Each day is what, 330 minutes or what, what's the, the minutes in a school day? Are we required to have so many minutes of instructional time?
Yes. Tracy? For instructional time at the state level, so many minutes, the required minutes of instruction?
If it's six times 55, that's 330, but I'm not sure.
Five to six hours, so 300, 360.
Okay. So I guess where I'm leaning, going with this is that in the slide that you talked about with synchronous and asynchronous learning, do we only get credit for synchronous learning time? We're given.
Both.
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 Okay. And there's no balance or minimal synchronous learning time? Okay.
No, very flexible. Again, students engaged could be offline, which is fine because we're trying to create. we're trying to create ultimately independent learners.
Okay.
But to do that, it takes a planned system to move students that level of independence.
So, if we, if we had those students face to face in our classroom and we're facilitating instruction for ten minutes or chunking that information that we're giving to students. So, again, if I had them face to face, I'm facilitating the learning for the students and then independently I'm stepping back and I'm letting the students apply the learning that I just facilitated with them.
So, so don't they ask for proof for asynchronous learning? And what proof do we have? Are they gonna take us at our word that, that our students spend X percent of their school day?
Yes, they, they, there, there will not be, we're trying to create a mechanism through, through our system that we can say that students were in attendance.
Yeah.
But again, if they're remote, I, I will say this though, because I've experienced blended learning, I've experienced where I've had juniors and seniors in a classroom for two days or three days a week. The other time, they're either at home or they're in the building.
Right.
In a particular, like the IMC. The data showed that, and this, this came from teachers, that mastery increased the more independence we gave the student.
Okay.
And I think that's the ultimate goal here. How do we create independent learners? And back to Tom's thought, especially as they transition from high school to whatever their next level of learning is.
So, with the computer that Jack Byrd just gave them, they're going to log into our learning management system, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Will we be able to actually track that time as?
I'll defer to Jack on that one.
So, I mean, do we, do we, do we want to or have the ability to track that time that they've logged down?
Well, I don't know if we can. Jack, you wanna speak to that?
I, I will say this though, a lot of manipulations can take place around that thought. The proof is going to be in their mastery of that particular content.
Okay.
That will be the proof. So, if you, if you want to play the, you know, because every time you create a barrier, it's amazing how students are creative finding a way around that barrier.
Sure.
Whether it be cybersecurity or what have you. So, with that said, we have to figure out that what is the ultimate assess, the ultimate assessment is have they mastered their learning?
Yeah.
But go ahead, answer that. Do, can we track that?
Yes, we, we, we know the amount of time that they have spent.
Good.
On the OMS.
Well, I, I once had the pleasure of experiencing an online driving course for certain activities that I had engaged in. And every, every once in a while, I was asked to prove my identity.
Yeah, yeah.
To make sure that I was actually actively involved.
Yeah.
I still have my license, by the way.
Any more questions? I mean, what Ramona's been doing is huge as far as, that's a huge lift. And as you've heard me say, I think truly the foundation is there now. Now, we're into the stage of not just clarity, but now let's implement. So, our focus is about implementation. How do we use our directors? How do we use our coaches? How do we support building level staff, both principals, administrators, as well as teachers? So, I think the, you know, kudos to all your work that you've done and I'm very excited. I would like to get into classrooms. I've met with all the high school principals. I think they're thinking I won't be there, but I will try to get into classrooms because I wanna see this in action and I want to reinforce it. Same with our cabinet and same with our directors. So, there may be a little shift in that. That's more to come in a later date, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move to, I like to call this the operation side, the nuts and bolts, which I can really understand this and it's very, it's more tactical. So, go ahead, Kathy.
All right. First of all, we'll talk about cleaning procedures and if you have the next slide, we were, you know, as you know, we're partnering with SEDEXO to make sure that we have clean facilities, maintenance and operations in the schools. We'll be working with SEDEXO to make sure that we have clean areas for our students and, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think that microphone's working too well.
That's what I heard. Okay, I'll start over again.
That's.
Um, so, as you know, we're partnering with SEDEXO and our maintenance and operations department works very closely with them to make sure that we are providing a clean environment for our students and our teachers. And they have got some procedures in place that aren't typical for classroom cleaning and so forth. They're, they're adding extra steps, they're making sure that we're hitting high-touch areas to make sure that everything is safer for the students. We are using products that are EPA approved for use against the virus. So, that will be helpful also. And we are, this is something new this year, we're going to have product available in each classroom for periodic cleaning of frequently touched surfaces. So, there will be a bottle in the room with paper towels. The desks can be cleaned in between students. And I know in some of the class lists that, that students have been asked to purchase items for school, they've asked for parents to buy wipes. And we are not providing wipes in the classroom. Frankly, they're hard to find for one thing. But if parents do, are able to find wipes and they wanna provide them for their students area, they are welcome to do that. If they can't find them, know that we have this as an alternative, these cleaning products and paper towels for the students. And along, I, I'll reinforce, you know, we talked earlier about the SEDEXO contract and that they're providing nighttime supervision. Again, that is to make sure that they're, they're monitoring the work of the custodians to make sure that we have clean areas for the students. There's also environmental considerations. So, indoor air quality is something that we are always concerned about. As you know, we have an indoor air quality policy. But one of the, the things that we can do and our facilities teams, our facilities team facilitates this, and that's making sure that our ventilation systems are thoroughly checked and then they're adjusted for air exchanges. And this is all computerized so that they can monitor this. They will also make sure that all air filters, filters are changed and they'll be checked every sixty days. And unfortunately, as you know, we do have some buildings that still don't have air conditioning. We have five buildings and that is going to be a concern with people wearing masks and so forth. So, we have worked with buildings to identify areas if people do need relief, where they could go in an area. There are air-conditioned spaces in every building, even though the entire buildings are in air-condition, where they can go and get some relief. And we also will be providing fans to assist in the ventilation. So, we're gonna do all that we can to make sure that the, the air quality is good. And, and folks need to follow our normal indoor air quality policies as well.
Kathy, do I understand that those five buildings will be air-conditioned?
They will.
By what, the end of twenty twenty-two?
No, I imagine twenty-three is what I'm guessing. Twenty, Darren's giving me the, yeah, yeah. So, we're fortunate though that our community approved that. Otherwise, we would not have that, that done by that time. So, next I'll go into the personal protective equipment and I'll start with masks and shields. And just to sort of put this in perspective, we are expecting to buy probably four million masks by the, by the end of the year.
Wow.
Part of that's gonna depend on who, what choices families are making. But, and then for shields, at the, at the moment, we've purchased thirty-two hundred shields. I'm not sure if we'll need to purchase more of those at this point. And as been stated already, students will be provided a mask daily and they'll get that either on the school bus or they'll get it when they get to school. We also will allow students to bring their own mask if they choose to do that. We just wanna stress that they should be cleaned often, every day they should have a clean mask on. Employees are responsible to provide their own mask. And as far as the face shields are concerned, they are being provided to all teachers and then certain other employees. And some of those employees would be classroom assistants, special ed assistants, ELL assistants, administrators who might have close contact, like a counselor speaking to a student. So, we've, we've tried to capture all those positions. Again, this, this may be a play out as we go, but at the moment, I feel like we've, we're doing a good thing here for our teachers to help them be able to show their face to their students. One of the things that came up at first is like all K through, two teachers should have one so that they can do phonics with the students and they can see their mouth. So, then it, it kind of led, one thing led to another and it was determined that really all teachers. Now, when they're not, mouth doesn't need to be seen. Really with these shields, they're supposed to continue to wear a mask even though they have the shield on. As far as sanitizer is concerned, we are purchasing the approved, CDC-approved sanitizer. The CDC requires sixty percent alcohol-based, ours is going to be a seventy percent alcohol-based that we have. There will be a container in every single classroom and those will be refilled in the evenings by SEDEXO or whenever they need to be refilled. There will also be bottles in the offices and there will be stands in common areas where people could also get sanitizer that way. Again, this is another item that was on the supply list for the students. And I'm guessing more likely families would buy, you know, small personal sanitizer if they can find those. But they should know if they're unable to get those for their individual student, they will be available in every classroom. And we are purchasing quite a bit of, of that. And, and so, you know, in, in both of these categories, the state does have a program too to help support schools. And we have asked, we have said that we would like to participate in that. They're providing one cloth mask times the number of students you have. I'm not sure at this point how those will be distributed. We don't have them yet. And sanitizer, they're providing an equal amount of gallons to every single school district in the state. So, it's not a lot for us, but it is some, some sanitizer that the state has provided. So, we'll welcome those things. And then, in terms of student meals, a different subject now, but moving on to a different topic here. Breakfast and lunches, of course, will be provided to those that are at school, but they'll be done differently. Breakfast will be picked up on the way into the school and eaten in the classroom. And that's, that's how it's done right now in elementary schools, but this will be done in secondary schools as well now. Lunches, in the elementary, they'll be delivered near the classrooms and eaten in the classroom. In secondary, the students will go to the cafeteria, pick their lunch up, but then take it back to the classroom and eat it there. If they are choosing the blended model, what we are going to attempt to do here is to provide, provide them a meal to take home with them for the next day. And those will be packaged up and if they ride the bus, they will be on the bus. And we, we wanna say, you know, to our students and, and our parents, we really need them to take care that those are not opened up on the bus, that they get those all the way home. They will be often foods that can be heated up.
Thank you.
I'm told they will not be necessarily appetizing on the bus because it's, it's product that can be taken home and heated up for them. So, it could be frozen meals from time to time so that they, they would take those home and heat them the next day. So, they need to go home and be refrigerated and then, then they can be cooked. Those that choose complete remote learning, we will have a weekly distribution of five sets of meals, breakfast and lunch, that parents will pick up. And we have not determined what that day will be yet. We're working on that. And that will begin the second week of school. So, not the thirteenth of August, it'll, it'll start the week after that. So, we wanna, we wanna find a way to provide food to every student, but it'll be different this year. And particularly those that are choosing remote or have a blended schedule, it's, it's gonna be a little bit different than normal, obviously. What is not included on here, but I'll say it here since it's, it's, you drink it as water, we did not, we don't have that on the slide. But as Dr. Daniel mentioned, the drinking fountains will be off and we do have bottle fillers though that will be on, which are in the same structure as the, as the drinking fountains. But students are being asked to bring their own water bottle and that's really important so that they can have something to drink during the day since they won't have access to the drinking fountain. So, I just wanna say in part, parting here, hats off to all the behind-the-scenes people that are making sure that school will go on and, and be safe for our students. Any questions?
Excellent. Oh, yeah, there you go.
So, all of this information, again, there's an extensive list on FAQs on our website page. So, we're asking parents to go there for that information. It's being added to every day, perhaps even modified some of the current information. We also will have soon the whole return to learn plan in a booklet-type format. And that should be in the next day or so. So, it gives me another chance to touch base with all the teachers and all of our parents actually and students. So, plan on doing that. July twenty-ninth is huge. Please register whether you're remote or whether or not you're going in person. So, those are, that, that's your update in regards with happening to return and to learn. So, I think we're in a good position. I think we're being, covering the training for our staff and our teachers. And we'll continue to listen to the input of our constituents.
I do have a question. I, Kathy explained very well the procedures for the safety of our students. Obviously, you've thought this out very well. Sounds like we're gonna have clean, clean buildings, very safe buildings with our masks and the hand sanitizer and all those things. But I guess my question that parents are concerned about, if we would have a COVID case, what are the procedures for that?
So, just today, we're sent some more information from the Indiana Department of Health. And there are specific procedures in place. If Mary was here tonight and she apologizes, she's a new grandmother.
No.
And she's there today. So, that's why she's not here. We are so fortunate to have Mary Hess. She works so closely with the county health department. We have protocols in place where algorithms exist. If this situation, there, you follow the flow. If this happens, if this happens. We have numerous scenarios that have been generated. However, we know there will be an infinite number of scenarios. So, therefore, the guidelines are somewhat being modified. For instance, at one time it's seventy-two hours, now it's down to twenty-four hours. But I just wanna say, privacy is utmost important. So, there will be no sharing of names of people who are perhaps infected. However, there will be ten to fourteen days of either quarantine or isolation. That will be the question when that starts to happen, because I truly believe it's not a matter of if, it's when. When that begins to happen, how's that impact each individual school? Because we will look at it on an individual school basis, site basis. That will then drive eventually, if you have, if, if it permeates into many other buildings, then you have the decision, how many is too many? And when, then do you go entirely remote? So, we are very serious about remote training and handing those computers to our students as quickly as possible because we want to have that time to train, yes, our teachers, but our teachers then to train our students on how to utilize remote learning. We cannot go back to last spring. All across our country, we stopped learning, basically. And I think that's, you, you can look at all the data, that's basically what happened. So, with that, we cannot go back there again. You're gonna find, if we do that, we're gonna have generations of lost time in educating our kids. We can't continue doing that. So, very serious about the remote learning piece and very serious about the safety piece. And safety does trump everything.
Right.
So.
And when we had that Zoom meeting you were mentioning before with the PTA and some parents and things, Kathy had mentioned in the break-off groups that, you know, parents are crucial this time for, for being supportive of the district, making sure their students follow the guidelines with the masks and cleanliness and that type of thing. And we really, really need parent support right now, more than ever.
Ever.
We need parents to back us, to be supportive of what we're establishing in each classroom. So, I hope our parents.
Yeah, thank you for that, yes.
Continue to support us and reinforce what we're telling our students at home, you know, follow those same guidelines and be safe. And it's the only way we're gonna be safe as a district.
Okay. Board member comments? Steve?
Well, as long as we're flexible and that we start with a... Well, as long as we're flexible and that we start with a strong principles and ideas as to what we need to do when something happens, I think we'll be okay. I mean, it's, you know, we're going to have to also be, play some of this by ear. It's, we don't have all the answers to every scenario, but I'm pleased with what I heard this evening. I would make one suggestion, and that is, as I was listening to the presentation this evening, if there is, maybe you've given this some thought already, but a video or a visual to this, and I was likening this to the instructions that airlines give you with respect to the onboarding process. Many years ago, they, you know, a flight attendant would mumble something over a phone, but now the airlines have a video that clearly demonstrate, visually demonstrate everything that you need to be aware of. That might be helpful for visual learners to see pictures of what we've described in this PowerPoint.
I just want to commend you and your staff for all the hard work that you devoted to trying to wrap your heads around this, these unusual circumstances. And again, like Steve, I like what I heard. I feel like you've really thought things through. I just, and I want to commend the teachers because obviously they're going to be the ones in the classrooms, and they're the ones that are also going to be at risk because that's where the learning takes place. Teachers have always been on the front lines. It doesn't matter if it was a pandemic or if it's the flu or some other colds or whatever it is that's passing through society at the time, they've always had, you know, taken those risks. So I just want to thank the teachers for their dedication, not only to learning, but to their students, because they are definitely going to be taking a risk. But it can be done safely if we all work together. And I just want to remind people that in, there have been numerous countries that have already opened up their schools, and they have not seen a major surge. A few of them have, but in general, a lot of the countries that have opened up have been able to do so safely. And I feel like we're taking those precautions and those steps in order to be able to do the same thing here in America, at least hopefully here in Allen County. And the, just want to point out, parents are doing the best they can with the information they've got to safeguard their families. And they need to do that, and they need to be diligent about that. But if you are under the age of 60, then COVID-19 is less deadly than influenza. And I heard that today at a press conference by American frontline doctors who were holding a press conference in the Supreme, in front of the Supreme Court, and it was part of the news. And as well as from other physicians and pediatricians who, when interviewed, said they would send their kids back to school without hesitation because kids are less susceptible of getting this disease and/or passing it on, which is, I thought, interesting. I don't know how you figured that out, but they have, according to the science. And that nationwide, we have had 30 deaths of children, 15 and under. So just to give a little perspective that we're not going to hear because the news has been highly sensationalized about the facts around this virus. Initially, when we knew nothing about a brand-new virus, the safeguards and the steps that we took were warranted. Now we know a whole, whole lot more. It's a whole lot less deadly than originally thought, and we have learned a lot about the procedures on how to contain it. And so we can have that reassurance that if we send their kids back and there is an outbreak, Mary Hess, who's in contact with the Department of Health here in Allen County, has lots of contingencies, and they will be able to focus and put out those hotspots within our system, within our district.
Tom?
I just want to say thanks to the administration, all the people who put in so much hard work on this. And this community really should be proud that you've got this great team here working at Fort Wayne Community Schools, both in the administration and the teachers out there and all the people who are helping to make this work. Because this is going to be a heck of an experience, an experiment as well. And I just think that we're off to a great start, and I can't wait for kids to get back in school.
Yeah, thank you so much for all that you've done. You know, what you have done, normally should take at least a year to learn and to implement and to figure everything out, and you guys have done it in warp speed. So, and you're still trying to figure everything out. But I do trust in you guys that, you know, we're going to be off to a great start when August, whatever, 13th from now rolls around.
Yep, that's right.
So thank you for all your hard work. I just have a quick question. I know the YouTube obviously will have this board meeting that parents can re-watch if they didn't get to see it tonight, but will the PowerPoint also be on our website as well?
Yes.
Okay. And maybe that's all I had. Oh, and will Mary Hess be at our next board meeting? Would that, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, we plan on having Mary. She's in every, now every weekly cabinet meeting with us as well, so she's a vital part of our team.
Yeah, I think parents would like to hear from her. That'd be great. Thank you.
Maria?
Thanks. I just want to thank the cabinet and all the directors. I know that this was a lot to put together. And also the principals for doing the drive-through registrations and everybody that they pulled together to be able to do those events. So thank you so much. And I just want to echo a comment that Ramona made. She said that everyone is a new employee in the pandemic. And so I know that I mentioned it before about giving each other grace. This is our first worldwide pandemic, and I think that we need to offer everyone grace, and we need to be flexible. I was reading some of the comments on the YouTube feed, and there are lots of questions still. And I would encourage parents and families to reach out to their principals, read the frequently asked question page. Like Dr. Daniels mentioned, that FAQ page is being updated frequently. And so we hear your questions, we hear your concerns, and we're going to get you answers to those. So please just sit tight and again, offer each other grace. And like Ann mentioned, we're all a family. We're all the FWCS family, and we're all the Fort Wayne community, and just want to make sure that we take care of each other. So if those parents could encourage other students, their students, to keep masks on on the bus and adhere to the rules and policies that are being set up to keep everyone safe. And just wanted to say, welcome to Raleigh Booker.
Thanks.
Julie, if I could just ask, make a comment and ask a question of Dr. Daniel. I know that the pushback of the start of the school year by three days is appreciated, but I know that some of us heard requests to either start school in September or to go virtual learning for an extended period of time. And what was the discussion with your team about those options?
So we know we have to train our teachers and our students in remote learning. For them, and we have to have the equipment available for our students if we were to go remote. So the idea is, start with proper training. Let's have those in hand in case something happens because of state guidelines that say you can't, everyone's going to remote. So we were very aware of thinking, well, if we would go to, say, after Labor Day. But again, we have the training, we're ready to go, let's do this. And we have the PPE in place. We think we've covered the safety issue. We're still uncertain entirely how we're going to create safe distancing in every classroom, but we know we've figured it out from the secondary world. The elementary world's a guess because it depends how many parents will do remote. The numbers are trending actually more favorable for enabling us to create distance learning in the elementaries. And I think the elementary teachers need to hear that. That's a good thing. That's a good thing. But again, we'll know after the 29th. But that was the primary reason, let's get it going, because if we don't, and we don't have this, if we don't have this in place, we will lose kids for another X number of months to a year. And we just can't afford that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to add, Dr. Daniel's just comment?
No, again, I'm, this is, actually, work is very exciting every day because it is brand-new. It's like, what's on the agenda today? But these people, I'll tell you, they have come through, anytime I've asked, I'm very, it's been very, very rewarding. And we know, I just want to reiterate what Maria said, we have to give grace because this is so new and so, so very different. And it will not be done perfectly, and we're going to have hip cups, and that's okay. That's also taking, that means we're taking risk and doing something we've never done. And I'm hoping, as I've told, as I've spoken to new teachers and new administrators, actually new teachers will be tomorrow, some. There are silver linings to COVID-19. We will figure out those silver linings, and there are things that are going to happen that we probably would not have done. I know we would not have done, such as remote learning, such as pre-recording of lessons, such as, and let's just go down the list. I will just say, those things are important. And with that frame of mind, that mindset, I think we'll be able to continue or truly create a new learning experience that's very meaningful, but also do it in a very safe way. So thank you, Maria, for reminding us. And parents, teachers, staff, if you're feeling ill, you stay home. That's the key. You stay home. And then we go through our nurses to decipher what that illness is. And it may mean we need isolation or quarantine. That's okay. And no one's pointing fingers at anyone. It's giving everyone grace during this time period. So thank you for reminding me of that.
And I think we're really modeling grace by the grace period that has been built in. And I really like that. I think that it is important to start, you know, on August 13th, just to get devices and MiFi's and everything in the hands of kids. And then parents have those three weeks to decide if they have really made the right choice for their family. So I really like that. And like everyone else, I just want to thank you, Dr. Daniel, and everyone that's here tonight, and QIT teams and coaches and everybody that's, you know, been working hard to get ready for what's, I'm sure, going to be, to prove to be a very interesting school year. A school year like no other. And just a reminder that we meet next on August 10th, and that meeting will be open to the public.
Yes.
Masks required, subject to social distancing guidelines. And at that time, we will be joined by our new colleague, Raleigh Booker. And we'll get ready to start school on the 13th. So exciting time. Do we have motion for adjournment?
Before we do that, just two initial comments, or three. First of all, Dr. Daniel, welcome to Fort Wayne, 27 days in. Little did you know that the deep end of the pool was very deep. Secondly, I just wanted to thank Darren Hess and his team for something that was brought to our attention earlier this year. When we were visiting neighborhood associations, there was a comment made to me and Heather Krebs about barbed wire protecting some equipment at Fairfield School. Darren's team took a look at it and decided they no longer needed that barbed wire and had it recently removed. And so we listened to our parents, and I know that they will appreciate that. I noticed in the newspaper this Sunday that there's a little bit of competition involving Anthem, PHP, and Parkview Hospital. And I don't know if we're going to get to a solution, Charles, but I know the deadline is just a couple of days away. Is there a Plan B? Because I know if there's no resolution, so many of our employees are going to be out of network. And I know we don't want that to happen. Any update as to whether they're smoking a peace pipe yet?
No, they're not, but they're still smoking.
So his comment was, no, they're not, but they're still smoking.
Okay.
It's tomorrow.
Yeah, it's 11:59 tomorrow. I've heard from both parties, they are still talking. And we have a Plan B, and we will not have our people out of network paying additional costs.
Thank you. It's good news.
Great.
Thanks, Charles.
Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those favor adjournments, think by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're out of here. That's done.
Good night, Kathy Moody.
All right.
No patients.